This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call to order the Monterey Select Board at 6:00 PM on December 12th. And we have all three members present here in Town Hall. Sorry for the pause, I'm just looking for Mary Accardi, I believe is joining us. And I think we'll probably flip items two and three.
So is red there changes and yellow that was mine?
Oh, come on.
Yellow is. It's just a school. It looks.
I'm going to change Monterey as well, but she deserves.
Okay. Fair enough. I think we can. Is this one there?
It's open section, oh, it's section four.
Never mind, okay.
The pain is there.
Okay. I mean, I'm assuming we're gonna have to turn this back to them and it's gonna drag out again.
There would be one other solution, which is that we could, because we already negotiated essential scope of services and because sometimes Collin Center isn't favorable to changes made by Town Council.
Except if they change that it says Monterey.
Yeah, or we could, or we could accept it contingent upon Town Council and Collin Center coming to an agreement on the.
Yeah, we used to do a letter of intent, where you could start, you know, you have the price agreed and then the two groups work out the difference of your, our council or none.
Yeah.
The ones that are under sample of functions, they're in yellow, but these look like a little bit.
Except for.
Can you hear us? We can see you.
Great, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you for joining us this evening. We were just taking a look at the, the contract and it's, it sounds like you are not the authority for approving the contract. So, and I, I think the board, you know, was looking for some of the changes that our Town Council is recommending. My proposal would be to, you know, approve it contingent upon Town Council and Collin Center agreeing on the, you know, changes that were proposed by Town Council.
That's usually how we do it. If there's any change in the contract, I have to pick up my purchasing people, but we always work it out. So I think if you wanted to vote, you could vote pending final signature, something like that. And I think we see that happen a lot.
Any questions?
No, I think it's a good suggestion.
So I would move that the town accept the professional service agreement between the Collin Center and the Town of Monterey pending, you know, final negotiations between Town Council and the Collin Center.
I second the motion.
Is there any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval.
Thanks for your patience with the process.
Oh, no, it's all good.
Thank you. Yeah, so once you, once Collin Center and Town Council agree, we'll sign it. And then we will begin formally. But I did ask if you'd be willing to potentially offer some guidance on the town administrator position and, and recruitment this evening. And, and you said that you'd be willing to answer some technical questions, even though the contract is not signed yet.
We have, we have good faith.
So I can start the conversation on that agenda item. Two weeks ago, the board unanimously voted to post the town administrator job and open up the position for applications. Since then, the board has received significant public and employee feedback with a variety of input all across the spectrum. After serious consideration of all the feedback and a thorough review of the options available to the town, I still agree with continuing the course of the board's November 28th vote. If any board member wishes to make a motion to reconsider that vote to post the town administrator job and open up the position for applications, please make that motion now. Otherwise, we have Mary Accardi here from the Collin Center to answer technical questions about recruitment and posting. If the board continues on the course that it voted on at the November 28th meeting, I hope that we can make headway on the posting and recruitment process at this meeting tonight. If we go that route, we should be able to narrow down the timeline of posting and the salary range at this meeting. Or I'm hoping that we can work on.
I, my reason for supporting is that I, I think it's important to have an open process. Given the town's history, to look at our options out there and I, I'd hope that we have a positive process. I have concerns, I, I don't know that we're gonna find a candidate we like better, but I, I understand why we're proceeding and I actually came up with a list of things I think it's really important that, I was having some issues with my friend, but I think it's still worth it. Just to make the pitch. That I, I think are important if we're gonna go forward with this timeline and salary we're on. But I, I feel like, you know, from my first days here, one of the things I was proposing was that we have succession plans. And I think I thought about it wrong because thinking of a succession plan, you, there's not much you can do if you have a bench of one. But I think maybe I should have thought of it more like a contingency plan, like you have an emergency preparedness plan. If you have a vacancy because someone is injured, ill, hospitalized or otherwise can't fulfill their duty and you have only one person in that office, what are the essential functions of that job? And I, I think we need to do it for all the one, like, we have a plan if it's the police chief because there's two other police. We have something if it's the director of operations because he has a foreman and several other people. But for all the offices where there's one person, we need to know what the essential functions of the job are and exactly what happens if that person for any reason cannot fulfill those duties. And definitely need to have that for the TA as well.
Yeah, I think this is comprehensive. I was thinking, to speak to this specifically, I was thinking that if tonight or at next week's meeting, we finalize kind of a posting and a salary range, potentially, you know, obviously we want to have any funding that we would post. So we could potentially make a reserve fund transfer request of the finance committee or at least send them a letter, you know, asking if they'd be willing to support that in the future.
I, I'm not comfortable with that.
I think you can. It's an unproceeding emergency expense and this is not.
But there's a bigger reason, because let's say we did that to get us through and, and we found someone, we went through the surplus and we found someone and we hired them in May. The town could turn that budget down and I, I would feel it was unethical to hire someone until we had a clear mandate from the town that they were comfortable with the salary that we were willing to put out there. I don't think it's responsible and I think we'd be in a very bad position if we went forward that way.
Well, I think.
Are you talking a salary specific to that or the total salaries and labor costs? Because last year, we just, here's the picture, here's what we're paying, here's our salary for this year. Are you saying specifically for the TA or are you saying?
We're talking about a significant change in the salary for the TA position and we're posting with a range, right? We need to know that we will be able to offer the top of that range. Otherwise, we are posting something, a guarantee that we cannot comply.
Agreed, Susan. I think, I, I don't think that the reserve fund should be ruled out of the discussion though because, you know, it is there for unanticipated expenses. And that's every time that it's used, it's used for something that town meeting didn't technically approve that item. But it was something that's unforeseen that comes up throughout the year. And I do know, for instance, Great Barrington just used a reserve fund transfer request to fund a full-time HR director. From a few, from a, a very, from a part-time position to a full-time position. That's part of the delay that we had in Sophia leaving was because Mark Prohinsky was waiting for the finance committee to approve a reserve fund transfer request. Now, another town doing it doesn't necessarily make it okay.
I, I wouldn't be comfortable doing it. For me, that's an absolutely bright line. Because I, I don't know what happens to Sophia if the town of Great Barrington tanks that budget change at their annual town meeting. But I, I feel like if the town isn't willing, like, if we keep the salary the same, that's one thing. But if we're making a decision to look for a higher level of management and we don't think we can get it with that, with the current salary and we want to be able to offer that higher salary, I absolutely think we need to get a clear mandate from the town that wasn't willing to support a part-time TA and barely like supported it when we made it full-time. I don't feel comfortable going forward with that without a clear mandate from the town. Because if we did it for this budget and they tanked it in May, we have to terminate that employee because we cannot pay them what we promised. And that, what would you do if you were that employee?
So, I mean, but to be clear, that could happen at any town meeting for any employee. And I understand that this might be more of a critical situation. But at any town meeting, town meeting could vote down a salary for an employee, right? So there's always.
You don't do it individually. You don't do it individually.
Yes, we do. The town administrators is on there individually. And so is the director of operations and so is the police chief and so are several others.
But I do, I do believe that it is a legal process. I can double check the town council, but, and I, and I don't think it is, I don't even think it's bad practice. I think that that's the reason why there's a reserve fund. We're not going to be, you know, fundamentally changing, you know, by double or something. And I think that's the reason why there's a reserve fund. And I think, as we just saw, Great Barrington did it to move with the flow of municipal government. Municipal government is already as slow and cumbersome as it is. The reserve fund is there to make it a little bit less slow and cumbersome.
I'd be willing to think about it depending on what the salary gap is. But given the history of the town going to get to even having a town administrator position, if it's a significant change in the salary we offer, and I guess maybe we should have that conversation before, I think it's unethical.
What's unethical?
I think that if you don't, if you don't have the money in the budget to pay that person and you contract for a service you cannot pay for, with certainty, you can do it through July, right? But you wouldn't be contracting for services through July.
No, I, I'd have to disagree because every time that we sign a three-year contract or more, it's always contingent, I mean, any contract the town has, it's always contingent upon future town meeting approval. So we have a, you know, a contract with an HR consultant and we could make it, what is this one, a year maybe? But we could make it three years. We could, you know, we have other three-year contracts and they can get voted down in any year of the contract.
Didn't we make it when we hired the police chief? I believe we had, we, we knew the salary through a certain time, but the increase in salary was already known when we're going through that and it wasn't very significant change. I mean, it was like a cost of living change essentially, right? A, a bump up for the title, but it wasn't a significant change from the previous police chief's salary.
Well, I'd, I'd be happy to run it by Town Council. I understand that you have a concern that's beyond its legality. I'm almost certain it's legal because, as you know, Barrington uses KP law and, and they, as I understand it, just use a reserve fund transfer, you know, to fund from a, a much more substantial change from a part-time shared HR director to a full-time HR director, a very substantial change. But I'm absolutely happy to double check the town council on the legality.
I guess it will depend in part on what kind of upper bound we're thinking we need to get the person we want.
Yeah.
And what do you do if you do use the reserve fund and then you don't have money for an actual emergency?
Well, as I understand that there haven't been any reserve fund transfers this fiscal year.
Not yet.
So, but.
They always tell me sometime.
Well, no, I mean.
If you're not having.
Except for that terrible storm.
If you're not having a special town meeting, because I mean, I would have just assumed you would ask for this at a special town meeting, I can tell you right now that there's gonna be a reserve fund transfer needed for the transfer station.
So, I mean, this is not really our decision too. If we decide to ask the finance committee, it's their decision whether to say yes or no, right? They're in charge of the reserve fund and so it's not like the select court is just going and doing its own thing. It's working with the finance committee.
Sure, but I was expressing my discomfort with going forward with seeking someone that's essentially a different salary than what we have by reserve fund transfer. I'm, I'm not comfortable with it. But I may be overridden by the two of you and/or by Town Council. You may say there's plenty of precedent for doing it and it's fine.
I don't, I, just to be completely frank with you, I don't think that Town Council would say that it's illegal. Your, your point about is it good practice for the town, I can't see where you're coming from. And I think it's a balance between, you know, having town meeting approve everything and also using the limited, using the limited means we have to kind of go with the flow. And like I said, municipal government is, is just marked and defined by being slow and cumbersome. And the reserve fund transfers, and the reserve fund is one of the few ways in which the town government has some flexibility throughout the year to deal with issues as they arise and not know them 18 months, six months ahead of time to put them in the budget. So, you know, and just seeing Great Barrington do it, and I think a much more substantial way. It's always about striking that balance. Personally, I would feel comfortable in this case asking for $5,000 from the reserve fund.
I, I was envisioning that it was going to be significantly more than that.
No, I think, no. It's only, it's only for four months.
Yeah, that's the most.
And, and so I wouldn't, I think that there is a point, you know, I wouldn't ask to drain the reserve fund for this. But I would feel comfortable asking for something in the neighborhood of $5,000. I think it's, you know, unforeseen to the degree that it needs to be regarding last year's annual budget process, which was taking place, you know, almost a year ago and last year's town meeting, which took, or this year's town meeting, which took place in May. So I would feel comfortable doing it. If we were to go that route, I would want to, approval from the finance committee. We have to have that in advance. So, you know, that's, that's my thoughts there. Mary, while we have you, could you please speak to, you know, I don't know if you're prepared to speak about salary, but about timeline for posting and what kind of might make sense given, you know, where we are right now, December 12th. How long, you know, would a town administrator position typically be posted for? And should we do that now or should we wait till the new year?
Certainly. You're at? To advertise now, you can certainly do that and get ahead of people who might be looking at the holidays. The conventional wisdom is you typically would advertise January 6th if you're gonna be advertising at this point. There's no harm in advertising for the holiday. What's most important though is that you get, we suggest that you do three to four weeks. If you are gonna advertise in December, certainly you would want to have at least three full weeks in January, you know, to have people apply. If you were going to apply, if you're going to post in January, again, you could do three weeks. It would be more concentrated. You really lose a whole 10 days if you advertise now. And if you weren't gonna advertise until next week, you want to make sure that you've got your job description right, that you've got your job posting accurate, that you have your salary information. My humble opinion is that you finalize everything and then hit the ground with it on January 2nd, that sort of timeframe. And then I would have it be the, the week of the 22nd of January. You don't want to have it be Martin Luther King weekend, probably the next weekend. I would suggest that you advertise by the MMA. We could provide you with a list of. And the posting too. And that's really the thing that's happening these days is that it's through professional organizations and connections. We would recommend that. So that would be my timeframe. You want to make sure that you're advertising the job as you see it. So make sure the job description is up to date, that you say what you mean with what you're looking for. And that you, in terms of salary, I don't have the market data for the area. You are in a unique area. So in terms of what you're willing to pay and what you have to pay might be two different conversations. We're seeing more and more municipalities adding a little bit of flexibility in the town administrator job descriptions. For example, is there a, a work from home, especially if somebody's gonna be commuting, that sort of thing. So you may want to take this next, we, we wrote some of those things of how you really want to sell the job. We have, we are doing some class, classification and compensation projects in the area. I could have our data person send some comparable data that we might have. And that may, I, so I would suggest being. The best way to say it is to be clear, but be, give yourself some flexibility on the decisions you may be forced to make. Kind of my first two cents. I have, I can pose a question like.
Thank you. I think, I mean, I think it's clear based on what Mary is saying that, you know, hopefully we could get a salary survey prior to even making any, you know, decisions.
I'm just gonna put out there that based on what I know of the Landford search, they had exactly one applicant with TA experience. And we've been pretty clear that, forgive me if I'm wrong, but my sense of what we wanted when we redesigned the job is to focus on having leadership skills, management skills, financial skills and strong, I'm gonna call it interpersonal skills to cover communication and working with people. If we want all of that experience, we're gonna have to pay for it. And I think we know what the $85,000 applicant pool will look like. I don't think we'll get a different applicant pool if we keep the salary the same. Which means to me, if what we're really looking for is that level of experience and training, we're gonna have to pay more than that or we're not gonna get an applicant for what we're happy with. Which, you know, that's fine and we can do that. But that's my concern.
Well, given, given that, you know, not a, a whole market survey, which is also gonna be difficult because the nearby towns use the town administrator position in such varying ways. And also based on my understanding that it's legal and trying to strike the balance of the concerns that Susan raised, I would be willing to go to the finance committee meeting tomorrow and ask if it's something that they would consider. You know, of up to $5,000 from a reserve fund transfer. Because if they say it is not something they will consider, then we know what our budget is, short of calling it a town meeting. And if they say it's something that they're willing to consider, then we know that that's an option.
So, but what would you see the, but the upper range of the salary being? Cause I, I, it sounds like you may have done the calculation and I haven't, that it would only, we're all talking about three, you know, if we're not hiring until the end of the contract, right? That's three months for, for this, four months from this familiar. So what would you envision that total salary being? Because we're paying them, we're advertising by the year, not by the four month period.
So take whatever you take from the reserve fund, if you get it from the reserve fund, like $1,000 over four months is $3,000 over a year. So $5,000 over four months is $15,000 over a year. That, I mean, that's just.
Right, I gotcha.
Back of the envelope math.
Right.
I mean, I, I think it's worth having the Collin Center opinion. And I'd also like to hear from Mary about what, what she thinks the money will buy us. What, you know, if we, if we are looking for someone with extensive management training and those other skills that we feel are super important, what do we need to pay that person? And if we pay that, what's the likely tenure in that position? Are we taught, I mean, I know that with a lot of jobs, it's 18 months to two years now is the average tenure in a lot of jobs. So what would we have to pay to have any likelihood of that person not just using it as a resume builder and jumping off to the next position that pays more, just like just happened in Flint? Right? That's why they had an open position.
Correct. I, I, I think it's striking a balance. I think that, I think it'd be wise to, let me check with our data person to see what the market is right now. I think that there's that sweet spot between, and I never want to use the word overpaying because that doesn't feel like it's a fair statement. But if you, you know, people are gonna move because of the job, because of the challenges, because of the work. You know, so I think you might need to find where you are. I mean, certainly, Landford is a good example of that, that was a talented person who did a few years and, and has moved on, you know? And you're right, whoever said the role of the town administrator is very different across the municipalities in your area. So, you know, you've got to recognize that. Just because you find out what one municipality is paying, that doesn't mean those job duties are at the same level. Which is why I go back to making sure your expectations are clear. So I, I think you might be served well and you're not gonna lose any time in the process by taking a week to maybe gain some more information on this. I would say, let's get you some more data and you can make a better informed decision.
I think, thank you for your advice. I mean, I think. I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense to let Collins Center do some research and get back to us.
Or did it would be good.
So that would be good. The only remaining question I would have on the topic is, does the board want me to ask the finance committee if they would entertain a reserve fund transfer? Because if we, if I ask them and they say we would be, you know, we'd be open to entertaining it, then we know that's an option. We can still always go to town meeting if we think that's more appropriate.
There's no harm in asking if they'd entertain it.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
I mean, it, it doesn't obligate us to ask them.
It's not going to be an actual reserve fund transfer request. It's just going to be, you know, if we did ask the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer request for the town administrator line this year, you know, of, up to $5,000, is that something that you would even entertain as an appropriate use? Because then we know, you know, we're either, we either don't have that option or if we want something, we go to town meeting. But we know how they feel about it and we're, you know, early and often communication.
Do we, um, the second part would be, you raised the issue of the difference between legal and best practice. The fact that KP, that they, Barrington did it and they have KP Law doesn't mean anything. Because your council can tell you it's a bad idea and you can just do it anyways.
Yes, so I will ask, I will ask Donna, I will ask Donna and, and look, we may find out that it's completely legal and we don't think that it's the route we want to go. And we want to go to town meeting. And I can 100% understand why. You know how I feel about town meeting. I can 100% understand where you're coming from. I don't agree in this case, as I explained why. But I, I do understand where you're coming from, but I think you're right. I will also simultaneously check with town council to see if it's legal. Because if it's not legal, we're not going to do it. And if she says that it is legal, we still have a decision to be made. But at least we know that.
I also think that we want to throw in to the mix, maybe for Mary, that we need to be clear as we go forward with what our hiring priorities are because those are going to influence what we have to pay. And, and we've made it, this position in a sense is a combined TA and AA position, which I don't think is very common. And that may be something we want to consider as well.
We should send her the job description.
We absolutely should. And, but we have to face the possibility that we're not going to find the candidate that checks every box. And we may have to make decisions about if we're doing this search, what are the most critical features? Because every candidate's going to have weak spots and we, we need to have some clarity on what's the most important to us. Because we wrote the job description because we had opinions about that.
Right.
Okay, yeah, she'll get the job description and I'll send that to her. Are there any other questions or thoughts on this topic? Or otherwise we'll move forward as we've decided?
Do we want to talk about what the procedure for the search will be, other than advertising?
Um, I think, well, if you have any specific thoughts that you want to entertain.
Well, I guess the first one is whether we want to make a selection committee or if we think that select, the select board is making room in all those vetting. And then when, how are we setting it up? How many people will serve? How do we want to choose the candidates? Do, what type do we want to pick people from acting courts and commissions? Do we want to pick department heads? Do we want to do none of the above? Do we want people that haven't been in politics? Do we want people that have, that are familiar with the town politics? Like, it's a long list of questions and I don't necessarily have answers. But I think we have to pose the question, starting with how many people?
I personally think that the select board is best suited for selection. And is ultimately responsible at the end of the day. I can understand the desire, you know, for increased public input. But we really can make it a very transparent process without creating, you know, a, a separate public body. As we do for many, many, many subjects. The select board makes the decisions and is, and is the, you know, is the authority. But we welcome public comment, feedback, we consider it. I, I don't think that creating a separate selection committee is better at the end of the day. I see the pros, I see the cons. I don't think it's better at the end of the day.
I mean, a lot of towns do.
I think that the select board is just best suited based on its involvement in the town government, based on its knowledge of the operation and the commitment that's already been made, you know? And I do think there are people out there who could have valuable input, but I feel like it should be prioritized as we typically do things and not create a separate committee like we do with renewable energy, which I think made sense because renewable energy work group does great work that the select board frankly probably wouldn't find the time to do and doesn't have the expertise in. So they have a, a number of people who are really invested in it and know a lot about it, some of them, and have prior experience with it, some of them. And they do a really good job at figuring out how to get solar energy involved with the town. I don't think that this is an instance like that, but that's just my opinion.
And would the interviews be open to the public?
That, I mean, we could review with town council what our options are. But one way to do it would be to make the interviews open to the public. And I, I believe we have an option. I think there's also an option to do it a certain way where you do it outside of pu- public meeting. But if we
Can you? Because that, I don't think there's an executive session exclusion for that, for interviews.
There's, uh, don't quote me, but I think there, there is some way, maybe it doesn't, maybe it's just by not involving all the board members. But I thought if you asked the same questions in each, you might be able to. But, you know, one thing that I would absolutely be open to is, look, we understand some people are in favor of a selection committee because public input is valuable. And, and, you know, in lieu of that, we're going to hold all the interviews in, in open meeting. So they're all available and you can come to them. We might, you know, or, or watch them later on. And we, we value your input, but we don't think that this is the time and place to create a separate committee. Is one, one way that I would consider approaching it. I just think by the time that you find the people and create it and have a clear purpose, it, it, it is a bit cumbersome. And at the end of the day, the select board should be really comfortable and, um, in, in the decision that's made. I do, I do see, Mary, you have your hand up?
I did. I was just going to offer a, a bit of advice. If the select board, certainly it is the select board's job. It's one of your most important jobs is to appoint a town administrator. We do not recommend that you have a selection committee. It's your job to select. Oftentimes municipalities will have an interview team or a screening committee. And that can be, we never recommend you have employees on that committee. People should not be hiring their boss. There are ways, you do not meet the exception of executive session because you are the board and the work of the board has to be in the public. So that means any names that you receive of resumes needs to be in public. So that will impact your ability to get candidates who may want to be confidential unless they are finalists. So you may want to, I could send you over the week some samples of different processes other municipalities have used. Some appoint a screening committee that would be, you know, your board chair, a tool committee trustee or something like that. Others will use consultant to be the pre-screening and submit to you finalists. We've seen it done that way. So I could give you a couple scenarios via an email for you to consider next week.
Thank you. Speaking of consultant that would potentially prescreen, is that something that the Collins Center does or?
Yes, yes. So right now, just to give you an example, we are doing one search in a town that has a volunteer screening committee appointed by the select board. So they're, they meet an executive session to screen the resumes and the people. They do a preliminary interview. Those, they're going to recommend a slate of finalists to the select board. We have another client that uses us to be that screening and presenting finalist. The reason you, you may want to have some sort of screening is that sometimes you'll fill the pool. If there's a sitting town administrator in a smaller town or someplace that is interested in the job, but they want to learn about the job and not have their name be in the public. If you do it yourselves, that's not possible. So you may actually harm your pool by doing that. That doesn't mean you have to have a full resident committee or something. So let me send you some options that you can consider. And you can go from there.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mickey Jervis.
I, I just want to say, I really like that idea of having somebody outside of the town do the, uh, the initial screening and interviewing. Uh, it just takes emotions out of it. Because they wouldn't be vested in any, any emotional part.
Okay, so we will look, uh, for that from you. And thank you for doing, thanks for taking that on.
Sure. So I think we're at the end of this. So what my task is to leaving today is I'm going to have our contract person deal with the attorney's markups and I'm sure we'll get that finished. I'm going to gather from our database of, of salary information, some surrounding salary numbers, you know, so that you can take a look at that. And then I will send you some materials on posting, advertising and process. Is that sound fair?
Good, excellent.
And we all heard the job description.
Yeah, I'll get that.
Yes, and I will get that. Exactly, exactly. All right, anything else from me or are you done?
I think we're wrapped up. Thank you for joining us.
All right, y'all have a good evening and I'll be in touch. Take care.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm sorry, I thought I would have the payroll policy ready last week. Then we set the agenda and I don't. I do have some answers from Sheila, which I thought I, but I think the general gist, yeah, the general gist of it is if there's someone who's elected, they probably don't need to be clocked. As I understand it from her email, if there's someone who's elected, there's no reason to clock it regardless of what position they hold. If they're elected, even if they're in Berkshire kind of retirement, you're just considered a full-time employee if you're elected. If you are a stipend, you, and you're not
Appointed in stipend? Cause if elected, you're full-time, then?
I'll just, I'll send you all the, the, um, I'll send you all the response from Sheila because it's, it's still a little confusing. But the general gist of it, as I see it, will be something like all hourly employees must clock in and out using the time clock software. And then there's going to be, you know, no, all elected positions do not need to clock in using the time clock software. And then with stipends, I need to fully figure it out. But it may be the case that a stipend position, if it's not elected, like we have a tree warden stipend. I have to figure it out. But it's going to be something like, obviously we want every single hourly employee to be clocking in and out using the system. That's how we track time and attendance. That's how we pay hourly employees. If you're an elected position, she, according to Sheila, you don't need it. You know, we don't use it for anything, so it makes sense to not have to work.
Isn't the tree warden elected though?
Yes, but it's a stipend versus a, yeah, so the elected should take care of it. Anyways, I'm going to finalize, it was, it ended up being a little more complicated than I was hoping. And so I just didn't get it.
Do we have any stipends that aren't elect? Yes.
And the whole department.
The whole fire department. The whole department of the
The building department is, I, they're hourly. I thought that we went over. Well, well, it should look into it. Obviously, I'm going to recuse myself if it's about like deciding something about the fire department thing. Cause I'm a being firefighter.
I don't think that
But don't you get paid by the amount of hours you're out? It was with a flat stipend for call.
You get paid if you're not out. Okay, flat for under two hours and above two hours, it's hourly.
Okay.
I don't think that it's required to recuse yourself if you, if there's an established thing and you're just listing what it is.
Well, so one thing, just to list what it is is
We're going to give it a raise.
I had this discussion a couple of years ago with Melissa was the call thing is one thing. Take the shift, take the night shift. If that's hourly, it's not an
Right, that, it's a stipend, got it.
So that's just a fact or not?
Right, no, of course.
It's a little complicated.
Maybe more than a little?
So assessor's software contract, I thought that we were signing the contract. The chair of the board of assessors signed the contract.
He did, I saw that.
He included the changes that we requested. So, you know, what I mean.
I, I, I mean, if the changes got in there,
Yeah.
I'm not unhappy.
Amendment for the manual for all elected and appointed multi-member bodies. Oh, sorry, I did completely. I drew my line in crickets. So what does this vote need to be? Just so I would move that the town of Monterey dissolve the shared human resources intermunicipal agreement.
Second.
Is there any, any discussion or feedback before we vote, we'll vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that is done. So the amendment for the manual for all elected and appointed multi-member bodies. So Mickey
That's the one I gave you. Oh, right, okay.
Mickey raised a point, as Mickey may know, later on in the manual, it is spoken to. However, what we had in that section is seems to me to be not entirely legal because the way that I read this mass general law reference, which is chapter 41, section 11, is worth reading. As used in this section, the term vacancy includes a failure to elect. If a vacancy occurs in any town office other than the office of selectman, town clerk, treasurer, collector, taxes or auditor, the selectman shall point, shall in writing appoint a person to fill such a vacancy. If there is a vacancy on a board consisting of two or more members, except a board whose members have been elected by proportional representation under chapter 54A, the remaining members shall get written notice there within one month of said vacancy to the selectman, who with the remaining members, member or members of such board shall after one week's notice fill such vacancy by roll call vote. The selectmen shall fill such vacancy if such board fails to give said notice within time herein specified. A majority of the votes of the officers entitled to vote shall be necessary to such election. The person so appointed or elected shall be a registered voter of the town and shall perform the duties of the office until the next annual meeting or until another is qualified. So
That's for an elected position?
Yes, but this goes back a couple of years when we first made the appointment request form. And we said that we prefer to appoint registered voters to elected positions. And the way it reads, to me, we have to. And we've heard the argument that, well, if someone is appointed to an elected position and they really like it, then they might move to town and become a registered voter in the town. But it sounds like we can't even.
What's the, what's the citation in jail what?
Chapter 41, section 11. So what we had in our policy was the select board prefers to appoint residents who are registered to vote in town to vacant elected positions, which isn't supposedly accurate. And then also because it is cited later on, a more detailed review of what happens if there's a vacant elected position. I just said for more detail about the process of filling a vacant position on an elected multi-member body, please see section three of this document.
Why can't you just correct that one sentence?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, um, you want a copy?
I'd like a copy of that.
I deleted that, I deleted that, and I, here's how it's written, Mickey. If there is a vacant position on an elected multi-member body, the person appointed to fill the vacancy shall be a registered voter of the town and shall perform the duties of the office until the next annual meeting or until another is qualified.
Next annual election.
It's, that's how it is in mass general law.
Annual meeting is what the law says.
Annual meeting, okay.
It's just quote quoted from mass general law. Do you have?
Yes, that's. Thank you.
Do we, do we need to change anything in vacancies, resignations, lack of accountants?
No, because that spoke through the process and cited mass general law.
Right.
And I, and I think that it's also, I'm having this problem with my email where I can't search things. It just says something went wrong.
The search function of email is a nightmare, and it's intermittent.
But Susan, this only happened to me in this weekend.
Okay.
And that's part of the reason I didn't get this stuff early, because I couldn't find the handbook.
Is it, is it Outlook or Gmail? What are you using?
Outlook.
And the reason I ask that is that I had this problem. I, I told Justin, I emailed Justin on Thursday and he apparently emailed me back. Right? Thursday night, I checked my email. Friday, I checked my email, because you usually have a quick response time, right? Morning and afternoon. Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, I finally get a bunch of emails that are dated Thursday. But I like, I know that I checked it because I was having a meltdown all day Friday and Saturday, because I'm like, what the hell? You never answered my call! So, and then I noticed, well, it says on, on the way I had it, it says that that's the time it was sent. Right? But it won't let me look at receipt time. Then we, I fiddled around because I asked Melissa, she ever had this problem? And she said, well, do this. And now it shows the exact same time as the time received. And I'm like, well, I'm not buying that the time sent and the time received are the same.
Now I go to search.
And it's just not dealing.
Sorry, sorry, one, bro.
Okay.
So anyways, as I recall it, we didn't need to make any other changes.
Okay.
But.
In the, in the section.
Do you have the employee?
Yeah.
Handbook or the boards and commissions handbook?
Right here? Yes. This thing I have a great one, because I got to that one more.
The last time that I found it, I just uh went through a few to mail. Because my search.
And actually, I have other copies.
How was the process for IT service?
Well, we've got a meeting tomorrow. Uh, we're working on a plan. I've actually worked through a sheet you sent to me. So we'll have more tomorrow, control the one more meeting.
You're making changes to that.
This is boards and commissions, right? Yep, here we go. What cha, do you know what page you're on?
Uh, four twelve. We don't need to make any, we don't need to make any other changes, yeah. At least not, not as it relates to that. That uh, there you go.
Right, because it's just, we have to follow that law.
You can keep that. I have that covered.
Okay. So that being said, I think that the, that those.
Okay.
Change, did those changes address your concerns, Mickey?
Yeah.
And you made us find out something else? So. I would make a motion to amend the boards and committees handbook as it's, the amendment's drafted there.
One second.
Is there any other discussion? Call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, so it's unanimous approval?
Thanks for checking it again and checking.
It's just funny, because it's, it was, it's been a recurring thing and. Okay, town administrator items.
So I think first one's Saturday night?
Yep.
And this is just to close out the project and get the reimbursement for um, Oxcel Road, you know, fifty-three thousand four eighteen sixty-five. Yes, it's not the same though.
On this or just not failing?
How did it go?
Good, actual. I didn't get checked that, too.
I mean, have they done the work? Yeah, how did it go? I haven't been up to it yet.
Was that anyways, a fire company party and he was like, you paved this road? You've got to go all kinds of money over here.
And it's, and it's wire too, I think.
That was after I took him to see the highway door for Christmas and he saw the clouds and machines.
Oh, yeah, speaking of the Christmas doors. The holiday doors.
They should be done by Friday, so if you guys can look on Monday and then I'll put it on the agenda for Tuesday.
Do we need to score like one to five?
No, well, the, the.
You had, you spent a topic.
Categories I had given you is what, most festive, most creative and most. I have it in my office, like, I'll get it.
Show us something else. Are we supposed to rank, rank the top three in each?
No, give me the best.
How many doors are there?
What if we each select a different one?
If you don't like the categories, maybe you can just give me the top three.
Well, no, what if you give a top three for
Each one?
Or a top two, because I'm just afraid, what if we each pick a different one for most festive or something? And who's the winner?
Oh, the other one was classic, like.
How many stores are we talking about?
More than I noticed.
Six here, highway, community center and is the library doing it?
That I don't know, because they've done decorating already.
Although I agree, I could do it in the yard, I have to say.
Cynthia would have done it, but she's.
There's technically eight here, but one of them is just. I won't.
I have leftover stuff. I'll put the stuff on these doors.
She has ideas for next year though.
Okay, so we have eight doors to look at between now and Monday, or on Monday?
Well, don't work it on Friday.
Yeah, don't look it on Friday, just in case someone's not finished.
Okay, on Monday. On Monday, got it.
Solicitor designate as special municipal employees, conservation commission, parks commission, community center committee counts on aging, cultural council, historical commission, LIDAR, working group, renewable energy working group, board of appeals, cemetery commission, finance committee, tree warden, moderator, constable, board of health, board of assessors, library trustees and planning board. And that would supersede any previous listings other than that select board always remains one as long as we have fewer than ten thousand residents. As I understand it.
Um, we said we don't want to put them, put this liquid on the list.
No, you're automatically.
We're automatically. Okay. Um, it makes sense, having read this, that we have it. Oh, automatically, definitely, yeah.
Any questions? All right, I will make a motion to make the following position, special municipal employees superseding all prior designations, and then the list is on this piece of paper and also as I read it. Is there?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion or questions? All right, there may now call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval.
Thank you for this suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Um, police donation.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the person wants their names put out there enough. There was a two hundred dollar donation. It's not enough. I just don't know if he wants any minutes or not. So you just have to accept this vote. I move to accept the donations for police department.
Is there any other discussion or call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's a approval and acceptance of the donation, police department. Under unanticipated business, I have a few items. One is, um, I ran into Dennis Lynch over the weekend and he just wanted to make sure that the select board knows that in applying to the feasibility grant for the community center, we're designating essentially ARCA funds to be the match. Because I believe it's a fifty-fifty match in the town. And I said, I thought that we had had that understanding already, but.
That's what I thought our understanding was.
As well, and I thought that when it was raised at the time, we pointed out that whatever money was used as that match would then not be available to use to actually implement
Yeah.
the design.
Yeah, we have a limited amount of ARCA funds.
It's a set amount and that's all there is.
That being said, the amount that he mentioned was thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's at least in the application, he just wanted to make sure, I think it's due later this week, that the select board is okay with the thirty-five thousand dollars of ARCA funds potentially up to that as a match for the feasibility study. Guys?
Yeah, I got that.
Was like entire feasibility study thirty-five?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay. So it's a fifty.
Yeah. So anyways, if we're all good with that, I think we already kind of decided on, but Dennis asked me to go check.
Speaking of Dennis, he called me like before I came on to make sure that we knew he was resigning from the committee.
Yes.
And I told him, yes.
Yeah, I think as long as the town clerk has it.
That's what I told him, because that's what we talked about. Town clerk, that's I have a lot of foundation to this.
And I think he, I think it's said in the town clerk office, so. I don't know. He may be confused because sometimes we put resignation on here, but I didn't feel that we had to do anything about it. So, and then another thing was just the organizational chart, which we had already approved, mostly in concept. But just to finalize, I hope the, the um wording isn't too small.
Yeah, let's hit that on eleven by seventeen. I'm not sure I'm making it any better.
Well, the only other thing I would wonder is, and I don't know if the software could support this, what if it was, you know, this, this part that's like darker color up here and then TA comes over here and then boom, underneath.
So when you do this and we're, the, why I sent it to you at the bullets and the ends, is when you do that, it creates this.
Yeah.
I could try a different like
Or.
Circles or like a different format, but it might be all.
Yeah.
I'll send you some different versions tomorrow if you want, but this was, this seemed the cleanest.
Yeah.
When I was looking at the options.
The, yeah, almost like if you put select word in the middle, but then the issue run into is you have, I don't, I like to give elected over here, appointed over here, it gives everything easier. Anyways, I think that we really had this, approved this in theory, but Melissa sent a version, uh, final version. Well, Melissa and I worked on it and then this is kind of where we're at. So if we're all good with, with that, then that's the new organizational chart.
It looks good. It's, you definitely know, those of us who are elderly, may require a magnifying glass.
But other than. No, you can zoom.
Right, no, I know, you know, we're documenting it, you know.
I know. That'd be the only thing was if, if somehow like this could be here and then select board comes down here, then it seems like it would all fit on that eight and a half by eleven.
Like I feel like if you could, yeah.
But I don't know, I know those things, I know.
They are the way they are.
Look, I tried to edit it and I said, I'm not gonna do it. I can't do this, so I'm not.
Sometimes the table features, like they're great if it works and I mean, I think of that as a table figure or the figure drawing things that are done for specific things and then you try to make them work for something else and it's a nightmare.
You could do like three separate pages, one for like you have over here.
One for all of the elected people and a separate one for all of the.
The town meeting one, the select board, and then one for the town administrator, which you can stretch out some of those.
Or even you could split it, you could have only the, you could have one page where it's all of the stuff that's left and then only print the, under the town administrator on the separate.
That, we could either split it there or split it at select board. And then I think in any case, Melissa, if this is the route that ends up being stylistically preferable, uh, you know, either have town meeting to the select board and then underneath select board say, please see second page for everything under the select board, or go to the level of where you have everything under the select board and you have town administrator and you say, under town administrator, please see second page and then we have town administrator in the following. Am I making sense? Um.
Well, it's the same chart but on two pages so that it doesn't.
So you can read it.
But it would just, you know, reference like, please see page two for you know, everything under town administrator, slot board, whether, I don't know if it makes sense to split at one or the other. Another item of unanticipated business was the just, we were notified that the church is being sold.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, the only way that the town, I think, would get involved is if the town wanted to buy it. I don't really see that being making sense at the moment, but.
I heard two different rumors. One, it'd be sold at a lower cost. You know, I didn't, and then I heard they're gonna go for a higher price. You know, that if they thought it was gonna be sold for a good general purpose or something like that, I don't know if it's true.
Well, if we were in, if we were in a different situation and the town was looking for a building like that, then the town might be interested in buying it, but I, I don't think that it makes sense and it seems like we have enough ongoing.
Real estate.
Yeah, that we don't, that, that's not the direction that makes sense for the town. But if someone had had an idea, then the town would consider it.
It's like repurposing churches is so hard.
Well, I heard, you know, she actually, uh, she got a proposal that it needed a roof. And it was three hundred K.
Did I bet?
It's because it's a slate roof.
Oh.
I talked to Steve up there, the roadside, that metal roof, they spent sixty thousand doing the metal roof there. But that'd be a logistic nightmare putting a roof on the side of the road there. Slate.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's no room for the dumpster. I mean, I don't know how you do it off there. You'd have to.
Close the road?
If, well, you can't close the road, you'd have to.
I mean. Part of the lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a very labor intensive.
Very. No matter how they do it, whether they replace it with slate or replace it with something else, just.
Well, no way you gotta do this, slate's gotta come off.
Yeah.
Can't put slate on top of slate. Can't put anything on top of it.
I'm sliding them down, oh my.
Anyway, so that was just an item. I am gonna really seriously look at the employee handbook. I, I'm gonna have to, and we're all gonna have to think of how to deal with the fact that when we were drafting it, we had an HR director who's referenced. We don't. So I'm just throwing out there, like I would, it's been something that's been on my mind.
But we said we did it in, dumb in the month of December.
Okay, but there's something, there's something a little bit more than looking for typos, okay?
Right.
Right, so I, without doing a controlled search or going with the vibe of the home, I don't remember how many times we say this is what the HR director does, this is what the HR director does.
Enough times that we need to.
We need to think about it. So I was thinking, even if you already sent in your final edits or you, did your final do thing? Um, comments and questions from the public?
I said I have a couple unanticipated items.
Oh, good.
Okay, what's unanticipated, sorry.
Uh, the year schedule, I know you mentioned that your schedule is gonna be changing. Does that mean that the board schedule is gonna be changing for January? When you start doing your job?
Yeah. Um, the only meetings that it would impact would be Tuesday mornings, and so I guess I have to make a judgment call about whether I want to try to get Tuesday mornings off or not be at the board meetings or try to change the board meetings.
The two, I've just had them all at night.
Yeah. Oh, but look, also, I'm on, you know, my, at least this term on the board is January, February, March, April. We might have a meeting in May, sometimes we don't, so it's four months, the January meeting, that works every year, so it's three meetings, it's.
Three more.
February, March, April. So I don't want to go and change the whole meeting schedule of the board if people don't want it when it's for three meetings. So that. February, March, April, so I don't wanna go and change the whole meeting schedule of the board if people don't want it when it's for three meetings, so that. But you're starting.
We're also on the budget plan, too.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem making it four, you know.
I don't have a problem with evening meetings, um, the only, the only reason I would see to doing, keeping the morning meetings would be. Budget meetings because people in the departments would.
Right, that's a good point.
But I don't think that needs to be a regular select board meeting anyway, but you're gonna have trouble with anything during the workday.
Well, I, I already sent Melissa my availability for the individual budget meetings, which.
Right.
I, the schedule starting January is Tuesday to Saturday. So I told Melissa I could, was available that one Monday where there were meetings scheduled. Um, but I guess when that time comes, I'll just make a judgment call if it makes sense for me to try to get out of work, skip the meeting. You know, you two could meet without me, that's a possibility, or reschedule to later, or skip the week, like we often try to do. Once every couple months, so anyways.
Just for the record, I have no problem with doing them all in the evening unless there's some critical meeting that has to be during the day.
All right, I don't. I don't have a problem with scheduling.
I actually prefer the evening meetings, but I understand the need for daytime meetings, so I do it.
John Wortman, I mentioned him in my email to you guys, uh, I had. Amazing conversation with him, I will stress that again yesterday, um, I think he is a fascinating guy. He can do a training here, he suggested based on the. Very short summary that he gave, I can give you this or I could forward to him, I just have it here so I could. From that goal, this stuff was, um, he could do a training here, it'd be a full day training. Um, I think it would require a reserve fund transfer because. If we wanna have more than six people, which I was briefly talking about it with Susan this morning, it might be helpful to have. She was saying that probably the whole select board should be there, um, it would be seventy five hundred dollars. He said if I kept it under six people, he could give us a discount of five thousand. He works with a lot of towns, um, and town administrators to hone skills and. Repair relationships, improve leadership, all those good things that you guys are looking for. Um, and I think it would be worth it. If you guys are in favor of it, I will also go to the finance committee meeting and ask them if they would support a reserve fund transfer, he said he probably can get us in. In January, early February, um, to do this.
And you were thinking to also include the department?
Yeah, I mean, originally I was thinking the department has. To keep it under six, I was thinking the police chief myself. Department, I know, Jim, library director. Don Clausen. Oh, and Don Trico. I was back and forth on the fire chief, but when we got talking about it, talking about what you guys are looking for. And communication and stuff, I think it might be helpful to have. At least two of you that are staying if you're not running again. And this, I'll send you ones bio.
No, send me his bio.
Send us the.
Bio.
Send us some material.
Where's he coming out of?
He, he's written several books, master in communication at work, hijack by your brain, recommendances of leadership. He, um, is a mental coach, trainer and speaker. He went to. College, anyways, he's also a PGA golf coach.
Now.
If you can pick slots, I'll give you something for a hundred dollars.
There's a keynote and a webinar schedule that are mentioned.
Oh, rock weekend.
You can maybe give me emails with the.
Yeah, I'll email you all this, yeah.
Email, I.
Oh, sorry, so after graduate of Carleton College, he earned his masters at Harvard University. I'll talk to this for you.
Yeah, please send us, I mean.
They'd be live links in the email, so it'd be good college.
He was very engaging and very. Just in the small, I had a half an hour conversation with him and I gave him probably an eight to ten minute summary because he asked me to tell him about myself and what's going on here and this and that and. He was able to tell me my personality and what kind of person, like how I deal with things and this and that, like that, it was, it was amazing, it's just, and he had a lot of suggestions and. And then the last thing.
Wow.
Um, the last thing is the office assistant slash select board secretary. I had three candidates scheduled for interviews last week, two were no shows, one canceled. There is an internal person here that is interested. Um, I think the minute taking intimidates this person a little bit, but they're willing to. Try, um, this would put this position into a benefited. Position, I am in favor of giving this person an opportunity, but obviously I can't make that move without you guys. Approving it, um, I'm not sure that. Health would be required right now, but it would definitely, um, up our. Berchta retirement. But I feel comfortable with this person, this person already is learning the ropes of. How the town functions, I think they would fit in really well, I think they're committed to. Staying in Monterey.
I think it'd be good to at least let them try doing note taking at a couple of the meetings to see, because if they're not willing, then it becomes a.
And I did give this person a, you know, a link to one of your meetings and said, you know, just take the first hour of it, give it to me so I can see how you do. You're working on that, but, um, I was kind of put a pause on contacting anybody else if you guys support that decision, then, you know, you know what it is and. Job to them if you want.
Do you have more people than considered that though?
Um, there was three more people that applied, one is grossly overqualified. I'm gonna call them to find out if they even realize what they applied for, um.
Are they local or?
The one that's grossly overqualified, yes. And has a job in a very high management position right now. I'm not sure why they were applying for. Select board secretary and office assistant, um. I guess I'm also, with your conversations tonight about the TA posting, it also kind of leads me into another conversation is. How you're planning and proposing, like she had mentioned something about offering remote to make it more, um, how are you addressing? The duties that. The level of this person that you seem to want is probably not going to do, are you going to have a full time? Assistant here? Because maybe this office assistant position isn't going to exist anymore and you need to, so I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time, like I don't see the person. Do you see this new person selling dump stickers and doing? If it's not me, um, the things that I currently do. I, I, I think, you know, based on what you guys have talked about, I see the candidate being someone who is gonna be above all that and. You're actually gonna need two positions.
Well.
I'm just curious, I wanna put that out there to you even. I don't wanna continue with this office assistant search if there's going to be a whole new position made up.
Well, I think that we have the office assistant position, we have the select board secretary position, we should. Continue the lock, it's good that you are getting applications, um. The benefits is a difficult thing, I'm not saying we shouldn't ever do it, but we had specifically discussed. When we, when we began these positions. Was to not offer benefits because I mean, benefits we figured were worth something like in the neighborhood of very roughly five to ten. Dollars an hour, so instead of paying, you know, eighteen or twenty an hour. For minutes of a renewable energy working group meeting or minutes of a soccer meeting, all of a sudden we're paying thirty two dollars an hour, which doesn't. Seem.
Wait, eighteen to twenty two plus five?
I think it's closer to ten, I think back, I think back in the day it was ten, so I was recently doing a job and I figured. Oh, the benefits are worth at least. I for, you, you have to run the numbers.
Right.
But once we change someone from a ten hour a week position to a twenty or twenty five. It's not only the additional hours, the benefits are worth a lot more than, and the town pays a lot for the health insurance for the. Retirement, we've, I mean, in the past, we added, we've already added in the, in just the past few years of, a few new. I'm trying to think, I thought it was a few, I think it's a few, full time positions, at least one that I could.
Well, we did, we added one to the department.
Well, I guess early on in my time, it was also near the beginning of the. Fourth transfer station worker, we didn't do that, but it was somewhat recent. Um, so, and then we added a police officer, so. I'm not saying we should never do it, but I think the original discussion that led to that decision was to say. Um, we could get someone take minutes at the parks commission meeting for roughly twenty dollars an hour and not in the thirty dollar range, uh, as.
It's a much bigger commitment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other thing is you, you wanna make sure they feel comfortable taking notes, I mean, I wouldn't want that job.
I do it for the OSRP, I don't wanna do it.
Well, I think it's, and it's the biggest part of the job, you know, I see it.
Oh, yes, it's an important part of the job.
I'm gonna throw out one other thing that's a, it's a secondary consideration, but it just tweaked my memory, so I said I had this conversation with Paul Martin from Glanford. He was on the selection committee, and he's been involved in the town there for, I think he said nine, nine years. Um, very bright guy, CPA, one of the things he mentioned that, um. They, they have a half time AA as well as a full time TA. And one of the things he said is that, um. Because they have concerns about the longevity of the TA position, because it is true that. The workplace is changing and that many of the people that they interview and that they've seen come through. They have to consider they may, like the guy that they hired just took a better job for more money somewhere else, right, and who could blame him? That's not a bad thing for him to do, um, he thinks the advantage of having those as separate is that you can. Keep some of your, uh, organizational knowledge, um, but also it gives a layer of insulation to the TA so they can focus on the. Management leadership, grant writing duties, and I'm not saying we wanna choose that path, but it did tweak my memory of that and. Because one of my concerns is that we're gonna end up with a revolving door in the TA position. Um, if we go this route, that that may be something we need to consider in order to try to keep some institutional knowledge. Especially when we consider that the finance committee and the select board is revolving door also. And, and then there's no continuity. I know.
It's hard to consider. Comments and questions in public?
I, and I, I said this to you guys before, and I'm gonna say it to you again, all four of you are. Handling this whole situation with reviewing the job and everything else exceptionally well, and I, and I, and I'm proud to be here and listen to you. Handle this, because it, you've, you've eliminated the emotions and, and that is so important because this isn't, isn't an emotional thing, it has to be. A business thing and I think you're all doing a wonderful job at it. Thank you all you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have to say, I have three minutes.
Okay.
I don't have any minutes in there because I've.
I was gonna, I was gonna do November twenty eighth.
Some people do not take the minutes.
No, I know.
I was gonna do November twenty eighth. Uh, you know, I couldn't read through it now, I just didn't get the executive session finalized. Um, but I would, I could read through the twenty eighth now, I don't know what time it is, it's, I was.
Twenty five.
Um, you know, probably in five minutes, I could read through those.
Do you wanna send them these on my work, so I can see?
Cause that was fairly short.
That was seventy mile.
That's.
Well, mine is.
It was like nine or five K.
Five minutes.
What?
It wasn't like two and a half hours. I actually emailed Melissa because I went on YouTube and I said, I don't think the whole meeting's there, that's what I'm saying. And, and.
Yeah.
And then she said, no, it is, and, and I said, oh, sorry, because I didn't, because it was so short, I didn't think it was the whole meeting.
That's really.
Cause I swear, I mean, fifty minutes is fifty minutes, but I figured it's not a three hour meeting.
It's only three big. But the, it's from what is for.
Oh, so we have a lot of.
Those are all mine, I don't know what you would make.
So. Then maybe what we do is now, since we can do this, did you have changes?
I, I sent you my changes.
Yeah, I just didn't print them out because I was waiting for Justin.
So, yeah, I, I'll, I'll take the one with the changes and I'll get it all squared away for next week, I'll get the November twenty eighth minutes squared away for next week. Um. And, and just do it that way.
And we made off her, I told you in the minutes.
Yeah, I, uh. I'm working on it, but.
It's not easy, and it's, it's strangely, it's sometimes harder from the, from the recording, like you think it would be easier because you can just keep back in upper.
Well, I haven't gotten the recording yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Are you doing it from your memory?
Well, I did, I went home the next day and, and just. Just wrote what happened, but what I will do is send the recording to you both when I have the draft minutes ready so that you can reference if you want. Um. Uh, but I just, that's what I've done, is I just like the next day went in and, and wrote up, or maybe that night, I forget. Because I knew the problem with the executive session minutes is they can get away from you, so I, I did that, I haven't referenced the recording and frankly. Even when I get them to you, there may be things that are missing that you wanna add because I, they're not gonna be verbatim, so, uh, that being said. You can have the recording and you can add things if you want, I, I.
And they probably shouldn't be verbatim for lots of reasons.
So. Yes. When, when the minutes are public.
I do have one more unanticipated thing, um. When did we last revisit the old bunch of executive session minutes? Pardon?
Scott was here.
Um, we might wanna do that.
Yeah.
Based on the fact that the court cases involve and I, I guess they can still use them even if they're not released or.
Why don't I have them?
I, I don't think they do, so.
Yeah, so that would be something we would definitely consult town council about because.
I, I think we should.
And I'm not, I'm not. The thing is, we've gotten all the guidance really about what our, our choices, um. As I. We only went in, I think, once to discuss legal strategy, maybe a couple times, so if we went into executive session to discuss legal strategy. And there's an ongoing lawsuit, I would absolutely think we wouldn't release those because we discussed legal strategy.
There about the meeting when we met with the town court. In executive session.
Then that would be purpose one, I think you're talking about like charges or complaints or discipline or dismissal of an employee. Um, which we have a slew since I've been on the board and I have a list of them, Melissa and I kept the list. And the last time that we reviewed them as a board was. Scott was there and Scott said, I think maybe we were mixed, like I think I said maybe I thought they were ready to release and you said they weren't, and that's.
I don't recall, yeah.
So I forgot the exact thing, but we did discuss it as a board, I think, I mean, it is our job to regular review that. My understanding is that sometimes when you go in to discuss charges, complaints, discipline or dismissal. Um, it never warrants, uh, release dependent, so we have that guidance and I can send that along too. Um, so it's just a little bit. A gray area because let's say if you go in to discuss contract negotiations and you make your decision or you pursue the contract or you don't. When the contract is done or you decide you're not gonna pursue contract, that's public, when you go in and discuss litigation strategy and the litigation's over, that's public. When you go in for purpose one. To discuss, to discuss discipline dismissal, charges, complaints, the board has some discretion and flexibility and it's not entirely clear to me. I mean, it is clear to me what the basis is, but we've asked town council before, I'll get you those emails and it's not like one year after. It's not a bright line rule like one year after they get released. Or when the action is taking place, there's a little bit of a gray area, uh, and I'll send you the guidance from town council.
That would be good, particularly because the, those particular meetings with Ms. Walker. Are part of the subject of her complaint. And it might be sensible to ask council whether it would be wise to release them or not wise to release them.
Yeah.
Um, since that's an ongoing case against the town, and I personally think that releasing them would be beneficial to the town. And I personally think that releasing them would be beneficial to the town, but we should see.
Yeah, we can ask, and, and if it's appropriate. It's always been on my, it's always on our ongoing list to review.
But we haven't done it in a while, so.
We haven't done it in a while. So, yeah.
And I'm just concurring after sitting through the five and a half hour deposition that I think Susan's right, it would be best to release those particular ones based on what inspired.
It's possible, we'll see what town council recommends. And while we're at it, we should really go through everything.
I agree.
I don't really know what executive session minutes are still confidential since before my time, but I do know everything since I've been on the board.
Right, okay.
I mean, we're not going to go back to nineteen eighty, so, but.
You sure we would have those?
But I do have, I do have actually approved executive session minutes of every, and I think Melissa does too of every executive session since I've been on the board other than eleven twenty-eight, which is being worked on.
So maybe we, I mean, I don't, it's, I don't think anything other than ones involved in the court case are emergent.
Yeah.
But I, so we could, we could go after the holidays, but I, I do think that we might want to have a session today.
Would you put them on the website and just have a link?
Um, we had just released like normal ones. So it'd just be stored, technically their minutes have to be stored in town hall as a physical hard copy, right?
And which means that if somebody wants to see them, they can ask, do a document request. Whereas now they, they get them.
We go out of our way to post them online, but I don't think that we're required to. The minutes, no, we just have to keep a hard copy in town hall. But the typical procedure has been to post them online like we do all of our other minutes. There are other ones like might involve a human lawsuit, I'll, I'll check into, I'll get a list. The other thing we can always do is delegate that to the chair, another member, someone else to decide, okay.
Or at least make piles, go through them and say, I'm gonna recommend these ones for, and I'm gonna recommend.
Yeah.
Would we keep those? And then it maybe makes the pile that we have to actually jointly consider smaller?
Yeah. Well, we don't have to jointly consider them, we could just, anyways, I'll get, I'll take up the guidance from town council. Like I said, it's not, if you're looking for, Lisa, don't. In a lot of cases, especially purpose one, it's not that clear, it's just not.
Well, I, but I think in this specific case, it might be good to have judgment from the council. As a matter of fact.
Yeah.
I have one other thing.
Yeah.
Which is that, and I raised it in the thing I handed out earlier, that I think we need to be drafting a contingency plan. And I think the one for the TA is kind of on us, right? The police chief should be drafting his and the, the fire chief has an assistant fire chief, so maybe that's their plan. But I think that every department should be asked to do it, but I think this one's on us. And I'm gonna go out and say that I think we should have a meeting just about that, because otherwise everything goes down.
Do you want to spearhead it though and get a draft?
I'm willing to write down some of the things that I think are like critical job functions. But I have no illusions that I actually have a comprehensive list in every, in any way. And I suspect we may each have thoughts about things that we know that the TA does that are essential functions. And other things that we think, okay, that can just not be done or can be delegated to somebody else. Right, like I, I would argue that if we had to delegate dump stickers, we could probably ask the court to do them. But I, I have no illusion that I actually have a comprehensive view of all of the things that the TA does. Job description notwithstanding, I could go down the job description and say, I think this is critical and this, is it? Putting together the budget would be a critical thing. Absent a TA, the TA has got pneumonia, is hospitalized for two months with COVID or whatever. Who puts together the budget? Does, do we ask the finance committee to step in? Does a member of the select board step in? Do we ask the county to do it? I, I literally have no clue.
Cause they all, all, all the above.
But some of the jobs are big and some of the jobs are small, and I have no illusion that I have a comprehensive list. But I think, I mean, we could say no one's answering the phone, but somebody just has to check the messages. But somebody has to pay the bills. Somebody has to make sure that payroll, like those ones I know.
Benefits, all that stuff.
But I have a feeling that there's a long list that I don't have. And maybe we need to ask Melissa to be contributed that list, because God knows she has a much better list of the essential duties she controls than I have in my head. I'm assuming. I don't know how long the list is, but.
Well, why don't you spearhead it, Susan?
Okay.
And then if you want to add it to agenda, on a weekly agenda, just let us know and hopefully you don't do what I do and put it on the agenda and then you're not ready to do it. Or if you want to call a special meeting, we can have that discussion.
Do, do you think it warrants a separate meeting?
It might.
It could, we would get done quicker.
Yeah.
That's kind of how I feel about it.
It would get done quicker.
And I think it needs to be done sooner rather than later.
So maybe it would be all about scheduling, scheduling a time and I always imagine screenshotting my phone.
Really sorry, which meeting is January third one I'm gonna schedule, I'm gonna post it now because it's just gonna be the fire company's.
Well.
And we weren't gonna meet on the twenty-sixth or the second, right?
The only reason I wouldn't do the post the third now, Melissa, is in case something else comes up. I mean, we can always amend it, but I don't, in theory, I've always wanted to skip the twenty-sixth and the second, I have no SB meeting on my calendar. But if something comes up between now and then. Because I'm not even planning on being at the one on the third, it was just about the lease. But I don't know.
That's why I was thinking of just posting that, if something came up, we would pick a different day.
Well, the second, probably that Tuesday, the second.
Because I have a feeling it's gonna be minutes of an hour.
Oh, well, anyway, if, if the board, if Susan and Frank, that's really your item, wants to do that meeting that day and just that, then I am completely fine.
Wait, are we talking, because I'm having the finance committee. Fire company one, or are we talking the?
You're talking, you want the.
The fire company. Yeah, I think it should just be that.
But you wanted the finance committee for January first.
Yeah, I've asked them, I've sent them the invitation. And I'm, I'm fine with participating. Um, but so, what, how?
To me, it's something like in the, in the, in the, in the evening, but Tuesday evening is already supposed to be select board. So it'll be another evening day, but I don't know if, if you want to schedule that.
Well, I could shoot for the twenty-first. Is that too close to the holiday? Do you want to do it on the other side of, in the first week of January?
That would be preferable, yeah. And then we're not meeting that week, so we will be meeting, but.
My only hesitation is if we're talking about, so we have one more meeting before the holiday, right? They're getting us some information. So we're, we're actually talking, if we keep to the timeline discussed tonight, I guess it didn't occur to me until I was looking at this calendar, of getting that information nation at or for the next meeting and making decisions about going forward with posting without having another meeting posting on the second.
Well, we can always meet on the second. So we're all just you.
Or we could delay posting.
Well, but like you bring up a point and you're saying, can we have an individual meeting for this one item? It's becoming clear to me, like if we're gonna go, at the very least, like January second could be mostly that agenda item or something. So why don't we just plan on doing January second?
Okay.
Or.
Are we gonna do it in the morning, because that's the first Tuesday?
I, it's possible, I know that I can make the third, but because we had agreed on no meeting on the second, I may be traveling. I, I know I'll be back in time for the third, but I cannot guarantee I'll be back in time for the second.
Well, let's have, next week's gonna be a little bit of a shorter, shorter agenda, I'm gonna get all my minutes ready to go. And I'm going to do the payroll policy and I know there's a couple other things, but it's gonna, we don't have a lot going on, so we can add it to next week's agenda. Is that a compromise? I just feel like between the holidays and trying to, trying to take a break.
I, I totally, it's not like I don't understand all this scheduling issues. I, I'm just trying to meet the immediate need in the time that we're saying that we want our target date to be.
Yeah.
So I will see what I can pull together that are the critical missions and less critical things. I, by no me, I, you know, I, I hope you'll both also at least think about it, because I suspect that you will come up with things that I didn't think of.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? We'll vote on the motion to adjourn.
Yes.
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 Unanimous meeting adjourned at seven forty PM.